The month of May two thousand twenty five, a total of sixteen documented business checks, twenty Pennsylvania patrol sessions, four park checks, one traffic stop, four incitements issued, one case follow-up, seven calls for service, one animal bite that did not occur in the county, two burglaries, no burglary mental health issues for both, one dispute between persons, subject was transported to the ER with mental health, one sex crimes case made and followed as being done, one traffic incident, area is checked, I need to locate, and one walker checked, subject is okay. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Thank you. Next on agenda is John Thomas, our nuisance officer.
I just thought Meredith and I were up on Saturday, we ended up doing twenty-two inspections after we kind of did a total assessment of the town. We had some good interactions with folks. Some folks were not so happy to see us and think what we're doing is complete garbage, but others were like, I know, I've been waiting for somebody to knock on my door, and we had a really good positive interaction. Notes were left in some doors, others we weren't, we're gonna mail them out notices. So, I'm probably the same public record because it was addressed in one of the emails to us, the house that Knott's own here on State Street, just north of the church. Had a good conversation with them, they had to repair on the house, they indicated that their intention is to demolish the house that's uninhabitable, and that they'll work on that this year. So, I think we talked about it last once meeting, but you know philosophically, our goal is this, our goal, this is how I operate, our goal is always, I don't want people's money, I don't want people's fines and penalties, we want people to clean up their properties, and we have a couple of folks that own multiple properties in town that might be a little more resistant to what we're trying to accomplish than others, but you know, I would tell you that you're probably gonna get some more emails and some more phone calls because people don't like being told what to do with their property when they own it, and that's kind of the fine line we deal with when you're doing nuisance abatement, where's the line between the community standard and people's right to do what they want to with the property? So, biggest things we saw, right, there's some vehicles that haven't been moved for a very long time that don't have all their component parts that we expect people to move. There's some tires, especially as it starts to rain, and those tires are gonna fill with water in summer, that are gonna fill with mosquitoes, we sent, a lot of the notices had to do with tires and car parts. So, I think you're gonna see some easy lifts, some of that grass getting mowed that you're gonna expect, there's some folks that have some old appliances on their porch and things like that, that we'll just see, we're gonna give them the timeframes, you know typically we give it work from seven to ten days for people to abate their nuisances, if they don't, we'll follow back up. Every time you do something with the city attorney, that costs you money. Our goal is, just like we do in State Center, we do a lot of letters and a lot of follow-up before we start calling the attorney, just because it's better use of our money. All in all, there's a lot of property owners that are doing a lot of things right, there's a lot of houses in town where people take pride in things like that, we'll just continue to work on them, but twenty-two inspections completed and notices will go out to those homeowners. So, I just wanted to, I told it was appropriate after we got out and made progress this weekend, that we at least showed up for the first council meeting, but we will provide, I may not come to every council meeting, but we will provide a report as to, and that's laid out in the agreement that I prepared for you, that we will provide a report each month of what activities occurring for nuisance abatement, what progress is being made, and things like that.
Hopefully some of them appliances you've seen are down there and gonna go.
I tell you what, we saw a lot, we saw a lot of people making a lot of work, I mean that was good on you for doing that because it was busy, I mean we saw a lot of people doing, and we didn't pick Saturday knowing that it was trash cleanup day and things like that, but hopefully things piggyback to where people are like, oh, I got a notice, oh, by the way, the dumpster's down by the elevator, this is my chance to go solve my problem today. So, any questions from anybody?
I don't have anybody.
How do you get your seven to ten day timeframe, that's just what you do?
Yeah, so you have to give people a reasonable timeframe.
We usually give like thirty on like a letter, so that's why I'm curious. No, 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 I'm just curious how you.
So, I will, does everybody on the council get an email, I mean does everybody on the council have an email address if I send the city clerk an email? I'll show you the form that we sent, because when we click, when we give people the form like tall grass, it's typically, it doesn't take thirty days to cut tall grass, right? So, we typically tell people five to seven days for tall grass. Now, for a dangerous building, we tell people thirty days. Do I think Knott's are gonna tear this house down in thirty days? Absolutely not. So, we go back and we tell them all the time, we'll give you an extension, just show me you're making effort. I use the same timeframes for Liskam that I use for State Center, only because it just gives us a place to follow up. So, the way Meredith and I have envisioned this meeting is we'll do inspections once a month, and I'm gonna do follow-up visits in the two weeks in between those once a month inspections, so it just lets us know, we're not gonna hammer people with letters and notices, the goal is, hey, who's off the list and who's, who's kinda, I don't like to call it the list, it's not like an audi list or a nice list. But we can give more time, our goal is just like, how long does it take for you, if you have a washer sitting on your front porch that you just haven't gotten rid of? Like at some point, we just, what we've found is if you hold people accountable and you talk to them enough, sooner or later, they go, do I really need to give you a letter, Ted, to take you to court, or can you just get rid of the washer and the freezer that are on your front porch that have.
I'll put on my tires.
Yeah. So, that's why, we just use the timeframes consistent with what we've done in State Center, but we can give more time if the council wants. But like on tall grass, we should be, people should be able to mow their grass in, you know, five to seven days. I've only taken two people to court in five years to State Center, I mean we, you have to really be non-compliant and just plainly not willing to work with the city in order for us to take you to court, otherwise, we've always gone middle ground. Does that help?
Just curious.
Anything else from anybody? Okay. If there's nothing else from you, you go.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Will those run the minutes whenever we need to approve motion of the minutes of May twelfth's meeting? Yeah. Motion to make in second for approve the minutes, May twelfth's meeting? Craig?
You.
Mike? Devin? Motion to approve the financial report for May twenty twenty five? Any questions?
The Navy's balance in the insurance fund will be adjusted in July as of June thirtieth, that way we see how much tax funds we get in December. And then to take twenty thousand out of sewer operating and put it in the sewer CP that's due on Wednesday. Give us a little more interest on it so that I can get to start mining sewer lines, there's a little bit more.
Can we put any of the water operating, or do we really need to add that much?
Six thousand. Six thousand they were already, that's in CPs.
Okay, I didn't know how much we need to average on that ones.
Yeah, ten, three, forty, fifteen, I don't know.
Motion to approve the first report?
Motion is in second? Motion to approve financial report for May of twenty twenty five? Craig?
Yeah.
Mike? Pam? Devin? And a motion to approve the bills listing? How long does that, two boxes of Lindell envelopes last?
There's a thousand Lindell that we'll mail out, probably use a hundred and a quarter of them a month.
So there's a thousand?
Seven months, fourteen months.
Is there a thousand in each box, or two boxes?
Yeah, two boxes.
Oh, okay, so seven months to maybe nine eighty.
I ran out before and had to write out all the practices, don't wanna do that again.
Motion been made to pay the bills for May thirteenth, June nineteenth? Second?
We already got a motion.
Already got a second?
All right. Ten, just wait.
Yeah.
Mya? Pam? Devin?
You?
Residents' concerns?
How many first responders do we have?
One.
Two that I know of, but.
Oh, yeah.
Mine and.
Are we still trying to recruit more, or what's?
We're always trying to recruit more. If you can find somebody that wants to get on.
The last four times I've had a call between Galen and Dad, not a single responder showed up, that's been over the last six months.
If they're not.
So I'm just curious of why we're putting money in the first responders when we have no first responders.
Yeah, we do.
We do have.
It's just hard to get volunteers to get more.
Yeah, if you can find, if you can find somebody that will do it, absolutely grab them.
Or do we go in with another city, or?
Albion, Albion comes up.
One of our responders is from another city.
Albion people showed up either?
Last three times I called for Galen, no one has ever showed up except for the ambulance. And this has been in the morning, where I know people are home, they haven't went to work yet. Dad been called the other day, and no one showed up except for a guy from State Stur, Green. And he shouldn't have been here because he was a fireman, and he wasn't paid to be here. He could do nothing until the, somebody showed up. We have our own fire department to cover that, so I don't know why he's jumping calls and showed up on that call. Because he was not paid on it.
Oh, he was not paid?
He was not paid on it, he was listening to the radio and showed up.
Okay.
So that was my curious note.
I mean, if you come, my neighbors had an emergency and Albion showed up, so it just depends on you.
So that's what, you know, maybe they don't have all.
They're all volunteers, so if you're available, you're available, if you're not, you're not.
And if you can think of a way that we could get either fire department or first responders.
Yeah, I guess if you hear, you know, Albion and Union, or you know, so someone to show up on that call, that's what I'm getting at.
Albion gets paged out at the same time we do?
Yes.
Albion gets paged out at the same time.
Same time as Liskam.
And you're gonna be coming too, that's my.
Well, yeah, because I know over at Greg's, Gladbro, they've got a, they've got a guy helping our track.
You're right.
I heard about that.
When you have that one, they've only been there one time for all the time you've had that.
Now, do our first responders get paid?
No.
There are not, no.
Kinda like a fire department for different, they get paid on.
Minimum for showing up on a call and meeting and stuff.
Yeah, we get what, a couple of calls a month?
They get, within six months, they get paid for meetings and then they get paid for up to six calls.
That situation.
And it's not.
But yeah, Cam, if you can come up with something, let us know.
I'm just curious how many we had, because I didn't know, I thought Melinda was on there?
Yeah, she just got back on.
Yeah.
Yep.
Oh, she did get back on?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So now we got three.
Okay, so now we got three.
You know, that's why, you know, if they don't wanna go on the calls, they don't need to be on the.
Well, if you're able, I mean.
I know.
Well, I got the same problem you do.
Yeah, it's just, it's just really pissing, really, that, you know, we don't have them to show up to do it.
Well, you can't, the town can't hire them full-time, you know?
Yeah. But I know we've stuck a lot of money in our first responders, so that's why I was saying, you know, why are we funding first responders, we don't have any first responders, that's why I was getting at.
Well, they're there, and most of the time, if they're around, they respond.
All right.
I'm here to address the city tile, drainage tile behind Washington Street, there still seems to be a problem downstream from where we live, because it must be a backup, because it geysers right in our backyard, back where the old porch used to be, but there's no post or anything, it's right in the center where the door, right in the center of the door where no post would go or whatnot. Anyway, it's still geyser and water, so it's gotta be somewhere downstream, and I know that the tile goes down into Deb Sheeble's backyard, and it goes in this big culvert, it comes out down there, so it's somewhere between there, because that's not filling up either, there used to be a stream back there to where it actually flowed, as far as I know, and it's not, it's actually pushing up above the culvert, back in the woods, so it's like in the ground and drenching out, you know what I'm saying? So, yeah, it's not pushing out all the water that the town's getting, and a lot of it's coming up in my backyard. I know we fixed it last year, or attempted to, it's still not, it's still the same, so our home is still at stake, we're at your mercy and God's, as a remedy, so time is up, yes, since our house will tilt back over, but we did pull it back, so I'll kinda leave it in your guys' hands at that point, and have you guys been addressed by this already, or?
I was talking about, but not down there behind, not behind Deb's.
Okay.
Have you looked at that lately down there?
That's just something I just.
That's back in Yoman Dome, where the water's coming up down Deb's.
So it's not city tile?
No, there's no tile back in there.
The tile that runs out down here, that goes across Bob Close's.
Yeah.
Is that?
I thought that running.
Is that plugged down there?
It's running, comes through Devon's.
It was running two weeks ago, I did walk out to the ditch.
Yeah.
Not saying it's running.
No, out of the culvert, or is that what you're talking about?
There's a spot that pops out.
Out on the curb, you know?
Yeah, it seems that water coming through, but it must not. It's still, it's still dynamo, though, I got plenty of pictures and videos still from our first rain, we got two inches.
When we have a big rain, yeah, that one.
Yeah, we have two inches.
They're not big enough probably to handle all that.
Right.
Where does that come from that goes behind Travis's house?
See, that's what we've talked about, is trying to.
Nobody knows, we really need a professional.
Well, you know what scares me?
What?
There are trees planted back in that, in that alley.
Yeah.
Could those tree roots be doing a number?
That's upstream. It's been going on for a lot longer than those trees have been there, and I just planted those trees like, those are apple trees, I planted them about ten years ago, so the problem was far before that ever.
Yeah, the alley, the alley to the south of town, there's trees, there's two trees planted in that alley, and I just wondered if they were.
I kinda. Yeah, it's actually backing up, it's a backup, I mean you can tell, the flow is. Coming back, you know what I mean, so somewhere past behind our house, it's not in our property, it's downstream. Yes, it's backing up into our place and ruining our home, so I can't even put a foundation if I wanted to, we wanna, we wanna push fire and foundation, maybe even move a place over there, but we can't do any of that.
Years back, they tried to put a foundation in a lot down there, dug down four foot and it hit water.
I doubt, it's on a water table, it only happens when it rains, and it's obviously right exactly in line with the tile that you dug up.
So this is something I was mentioning a month or two ago, that I really think we should find somebody to map.
Yes.
Figure out which tiles are coming from professionally.
No, no offense against Scooter, but Scooter is a plumber and he doesn't lay tile for a.
Just somebody who can actually scope these things and give us a whole layout of where it's all going, where it's all coming from, because you're right, none of us know where it's coming from.
How much money are we?
Well, that is, that is done.
So.
It has to be done.
To clean it, though, right?
No, to find out where the line is.
Oh, yeah, 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 sorry.
Consider having tile.
So that's what I was gonna say, we have it on here. We have it on here, consider having tile line located on the, so that's why I brought that at one point, trying to figure out somebody who can do that. Like, you know, they got cameras that can go up all those things anymore, you know?
Can't have a long enough camera, though.
It would probably take pretty long.
How long would your town stay there then?
I'm sorry?
How long would that water stay there before it's gone?
Oh, depends on how wet it is, a couple of days, a couple of days when it's real dry.
Probably got a broken tile in there.
That's exactly what it is, you're right, yep.
Broken tile. Tile is broken and.
So like, if that, I think that tile's just broken, because even if it wasn't backed up, the pressure will.
I have one more question. I have one comment to add, and then I'll give the floor back to you. I would be very careful sitting around that table saying we don't have money to keep a place from flooding, maybe the, the park equipment, maybe we can sell that back to somebody and use that equipment for something less important, you know?
Hundred, yeah, I understand that.
A neighbor's house is flooded, you know? So I'd be very careful.
I think what he was saying.
I did say, I don't, we don't have money to check every tile in town.
That's what he's.
I'm saying, I didn't say we're not gonna look into.
No, 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 I understand that, but just be careful that that idea doesn't come out, that we don't have enough money to do that kind of stuff, so.
I have a question for Darwin, I was wondering how you connected plastic tile line from like Tyson's to the old clay tile that you dug up?
Wrapping around her and put a strap on it.
How far down was that?
What, the tile line?
Yeah.
About three and a half.
Did you get down there and do that?
Copy that.
Okay. That's all, that's all I wanted to know.
Picture of it?
Huh?
Did you take a picture of it?
No. It was full of water on the deck.
I just find it hard to imagine being able to connect.
Well, I know one thing, your yard ain't had no water, even when we got that two, three inch rain, your yard didn't have no water in it.
We got pictures of this April second, the first rain, two inches did it.
That tile line though was cleaned out from there, cleared out though?
I have no idea.
At the end of April. We just paid that bill, so have we had much rain since then? I haven't paid attention.
No, no, we haven't had enough rain, we've had a drizzle, and I think we had maybe three eights of an inch, you know, quarter inch these last few times, but that first rain we got was about two inches, and it just showed, so. Thank you. Thank you.
Citizens' concerns? Along the whole business, discussion on new Christmas sites? Anybody in the item have gotten any prices for anything?
I don't know if it's one, think of fundraising or fundraising for a year after this one, or, you know, just kind of, or how, if any thought went into paying. So you'd know what you're gonna do.
Well, what are we wanting? That's the first question.
Well, we fixed the light pole, so evidently the vote is to put light in.
Yeah, but do you want just like a stalker, do you want to keep the light and put light up with it? Let's do that for map two.
That's what I thought, Mr.. If we want new ones, maybe we can do some kind of fundraising.
Fundraise it for the partner, fundraise it for that.
And then catch them when they're on sale.
How many you have working still?
What?
Yeah, how many can you generate for this Christmas?
No, not all.
All of them that's on the, that goes on the public?
No.
They won't work?
Not all, can't, can't.
So we got seven, how many?
And how many do we need to put everywhere that we have?
Yeah, well, we fixed ten, right?
So you've got enough?
I've got a fair, I brought.
Yeah, no, we did.
Use existing for this year, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, I've got some ideas for next year, maybe.
So, when I talk about this again, when? For East doesn't get drawn, I can stick it out there on the gym later, remind us.
Everyone wants to next year. Or, I mean, I suppose you can find sales in January.
Yeah, sales are usually in first part of the year.
January, maybe.
Discussion on Liskam?
Texted Bobby and.
So far, we have sponsorship of seventy-four hundred dollars, which is comparable with twenty twenty-four. Banners go up tomorrow, flyers posted in area businesses this week, sponsorship thank you letters go out this week, news release goes out to papers next week, we got a couple A-frames so people can see what's gonna go on here, what's gonna go on there, what time it's gonna go on. Ted and Leah Mosher are going to be in charge of the parade, supper Marlene Bonzer, Deb Gould and others, same crew as past several years at a volunteer, which we appreciate. Bake goods auction, I'm in charge of, kids baking contest, we're gonna try, Bonnie Gunderson, Diane Hayes are gonna take care of that for us, I'm going to do bingo, and we need someone to volunteer to do some kids games. We wanna try and get some kids games on, so. You're too old, so we need some, and I thought we put the kids games right out here, so we right up here.
While they're cooking.
I will.
They got old street play on, they got Apple Street out there play on, block that street off of the avenue.
They got old street play on. They got Apple Street out there play on. Like that street off of the alley.
And well, and, and this is only.
I'm just saying right out here is, you know, the cooker's going on. It's right there, it's letting in the street.
Yeah. Um, and I don't, I don't have tines and stuff for this, so maybe the tines work different. I, yeah. This very well could.
Tines are on the fire. That went out and.
So the kids games I would imagine are going to, way after this is, yeah, after the supper's done, so.
Oh, hold on.
So do you want to do that over here or do you wanna do it down there? Like we talked about closing off that street so everybody's hanging out before the fireworks down there. Cause you have it up there on the fireworks out there.
Yes, the fireworks are gonna be out at the burn pile. Um, we don't know if there's gonna be parking down at the elevator. That gentleman hasn't gotten back with Jody yet. Um. But yes, they, they, uh, the fireworks lady called Darwin, got ahold of him. They got that kind of worked out. Um, we're gonna ask the fire department if they can park a couple of vehicles in the driveways out there so people are not getting too close to.
Stay out of the cemetery.
Yes, yes, stay out of the cemetery. Yes. So as far as I can tell from what I'm hearing, if you're gonna be able to park on Main Street and see these very well.
We'll find out.
Yeah. This is all new, so we'll, you know.
Well, we talked about closing down Main Street.
You think curve, do you not wanna be gone?
I don't think we might be on the street there.
We talked about closing it down, having people hang out, cause we didn't really wanna lose the hangout before. Like we had it in the park. So I didn't know.
I'm not a.
I don't care. I mean, that was just the idea.
That might be a good place for people to park, to see them too.
Yeah, I figured people sitting there, chairs on the street or something. I guess that's what I'm.
Did we put that in the flyer to bring your lawn chair?
Lots of people bringing their lawn chairs. We drive their golf carts down the road.
The insurance, Bobby called and said the quote was within ten dollars of what it was last year. He does have a call into the interwriter cause he's like, that doesn't make sense. Cause the fireworks people are taking care of that part of it.
Yes.
So.
And what was it last year? Twenty-five hundred?
Hmm, it was three thousand.
They're gonna charge us for the same amount, but our fireworks.
Right. So he's trying to see what's going on.
Okay. And as far as insurance goes with J and M, um, I believe what they told me, now don't quote me on this, I believe what they said was. So when we're spending eighty-five hundred dollars on, on fireworks, eight hundred and fifty of that is for the insurance. I think they go by a straight percentage. So. So yeah, that's a lot there.
Okay. Anything else on memory of Liskom? Discussion on nuisances? Is that for our, our agreement?
Yeah, I gave you just a piece of paper. This is his agreement for John. Um, I would like it to be approved if he's not paying it. I'm like, hmm, don't feel comfortable paying them without a few percent in front of us. So he did get that up here today.
So we need a motion to approve this?
Right.
I'll make a motion.
We had a motion to approve the workforce solutions for the nuisance officers on payment is in June will be fifteen hundred and December will be a thousand. Craig?
Yeah.
Mike?
Pay him.
Yeah.
Devin?
No.
Ted, yes.
And then a motion to go ahead and pay.
What's that?
And then a motion to go ahead and pay is the fifteen hundred dollars. That was not on my list.
I said, oh, I need a motion to pay them fifteen hundred dollars. Yeah. Motion by Craig? Second by Mike? Craig?
Yeah.
Mike?
Yes.
Pay him?
Yes.
Devin?
No.
Ted, yes. Discussion on selling properties.
I think we're not quite at the attorney's office. Um, so the gentleman that was up here does not hold selling properties? On that out. So that's why it's taken so long to get it. I finally got the right person. Um, and I suggest just work on selling the Dubu street properties. He did state that, um, we could sell them together. We get one abstract for the properties together. The process is, um, you can ask for bids, you can set a certain price, you can ask for proposals for people to build on it. You can stage your specifications with, you know, if you want a house or, you know, you can put two or three things on there, type of buildings. Um, but then the proposal, though, you could set your price for what you want for the ground. You can state, you know, the ground is gonna cost you six thousand dollars. Um, most lots are up here, uh, said at what, three thousand each, you know, for those size of lots. Um, and then they tell you what you're gonna build. There, you state, this is what we wanna build, have built, you have this timeframe to do it in. And if they don't, then they get to start paying taxes like it was built. That's the penalty if they don't. That was my hangout before. Didn't know what the penalty would be. Um, but that is the penalty. You don't have to take the highest proposal. Like some guy just says, I'm gonna build a five hundred thousand dollar house and I'll give you four thousand dollars more than what you're asking for. If you look into the, that construction company and you go, yeah, they haven't built. Kinda like the mall issue. You know, if you find that that company does not follow through, you don't have to take it. So, well, that was interesting. So, or you can just put it up for bids and.
I think that'd be the best way to go is to put it on the market, take bids. I better check it and done what he wants. Then he's back on the tax roll.
I don't agree. I don't wanna see it just be empty lots down there. You're gonna get what, eighty-five dollars a year off of it? We need, we're, we're, we're landlocked. We need lots where people can build houses if they wanna come and live in Liskom.
What do we got to offer people?
In here, here?
You as a councilman, so all.
Well, you're real.
That's pretty smart sitting there and asking.
Why are you in there?
He goes up for my final check, wrapped it up.
Gee, taxes.
Well, if, if you're expecting a lot, for somebody to pay a lot of money to build a house and it has to be this, this and this. In Liskom, I kinda agree. It's not, but I also agree you hate to see an empty lot.
You know, we do have an exit statement to offer.
Yeah, we do business.
The, she's tied in with Martin on the chamber, economic development company. Alex said that she would help us put it out there and maybe tie it in to, and I don't know if the houses, if they build it, knew how much cheaper they would be from to have one built and brought up and put on a foundation, you know? I don't know. About that part, but it's kinda like, I really don't wanna live in Liskom and it's not cheap for Martin. I don't know how people do it.
They still have the interest so high.
So, I love that. Hey.
Yes, ma'am.
Kathleen's house and garage up there is absolutely fantastic.
Oh, thank you.
You guys sure improved that and, I love looking out my bathroom window now.
Thank you, thank you. I, I do have a comment if you don't mind and I, I apologize for being out of, out of.
You did fine.
You're okay.
But, um, have you guys looked at the, at MCC? They have a construction program that on occasion will build a house. I tried that ten years ago and basically the answer I got, Liskom was too far away. Uh, things might have changed. Uh, BCLUW, uh, I know when Justin graduated in two thousand, uh, they built a house and sold it. Now they haven't done that since. Maybe they'll never do it again. I don't know. These are a lot of questions and I don't have any answers and I kinda wonder if maybe those questions couldn't get asked again and with the possibility of, you know? Stupid questions are only stupid until somebody comes up with an answer that amazes all of us, so. I mean, that might be, might be something to look at. I don't know. Just a thought.
So when they did that over to, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
When they did that over to Conrad, did who, who footed the bill for that?
You, you know, I don't know. I don't know who footed the bill. Uh, all I know is that the school built it and it is, it, it was my understanding that the school sold it.
Yeah, it was Wallace's class. Kurt Wallace was the shot age.
Yeah, yeah.
And they built the house and, and then it, yeah, I mean, they, they sold it and.
So the school got, owned the property and.
I don't know. I don't know where the money, all the money part of it.
I know Union did one. Union did one probably, oh boy, fifty years ago and what they did, it was already sold before it was built. And the shot class, shot class.
I'm not so sure that this one wasn't, cause my boy Jerry graduated with Justin.
And they won't do it. They won't be able to do it now, I know, cause they can't get kids for shot classroom and they had like two kids this year.
No kid.
Yeah.
No wonder we're in the.
Trillion. It is. I mean, it's sad.
Well, an MCC, somebody I know had, they built the house for them. You know, here's our specs, here's our lot, you know, so they built it for them. So they had, they were fitting, footing the bill. For the supplies.
Uh, it seems like there's a lot of extra housing needed in Marshalltown. They're always bringing people in for, uh, to work at JBS there. Maybe if somebody got ahold of them, you know, you could. They'd subsidize it, you know, you could put up apartments. So we could, hell, maybe we could bring eight, ten, you know, people out here, a couple of families. Is that what we want? Cause I'm pretty much okay with Liskom how it is, but that's me.
Well, JBS built all them houses out there on.
Here.
Mary Street. They're all for sale.
Are they?
They're all for sale. I don't know if we shipped them all out there so we don't have so many people in Marshalltown that can work there. I don't know what happened. Whatever.
I guess somebody's gonna come, if they wanna build in Liskom, their property would have been in on that lot, you know, irregardless.
Well, I know. We had one guy that wanted to build in Liskom and we wouldn't sell any of our lots, so I believe he went and bought that house. So there are people out there that wanna do something.
If you put it up for bid, you'd have to put it in the newspaper as it were, right?
Right. Well, if we put up, uh, put an amount on there that was, it might not build the house. But it would ensure, it would ensure that the town got some extra money. We, you know, well, instead of a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, maybe we put a ninety thousand dollar house. I don't know what that'd have been. Or whatever. I'm just saying the lower, if we lowered it to.
If you guys remember, I went and did.
Yeah, I remember.
Contract and on that one, I just had square footage, like twelve hundred square foot.
Had to at least be twelve hundred square foot.
Yes, yes.
So, but that didn't give no price.
No, no.
And it's, and today's price would be way more than it was even then.
Yeah, yeah. But I mean, twelve hundred square foot and it depends if you're gonna build this house yourself or you're gonna get some guy from Des Moines to come up and build it for you. You know, and I don't know how you can put a, a price on it.
So.
I could put out on clerk bag and see if any other smaller towns is trying that, you know? And see if.
Yeah.
I would think anybody that would, that's buying a lot in town would probably be wanting to build one.
Not necessarily. We have a lot of people in town that want neighborhood control. No, that's why I'm saying.
I'll buy whatever lots are next to me.
If anybody wants to put a house up, have fun trying to find someplace to put it.
Wanna put up one? I got some of my slide that I made for you to sell.
I don't want. I don't think we can do that.
So we just need to, do a little bit more and.
I, I think we just, yeah.
It'd be great if somebody built. I would love for somebody to build. I mean, but I just, it's so expensive.
Well, and now's probably not the perfect time to be doing this with mortgage rates and insurance rates.
Are we talking about that big lot next to my place or are we talking about some other plots?
Greenhouse.
The what, no?
The house got tore down.
Oh, okay.
One lot back from the playground.
Okay, gotcha.
Well, now.
We're just looking at one at a time.
I was gonna say, by the church, I thought we couldn't sell that.
If you're really gonna put a requirement on it, I just feel like a building, like why can't somebody build a shed?
Why can't we build one of them?
Yeah, another maintenance shed.
I thought, um, I thought the water, water line is an issue.
I'll go do the reroute of water line.
Don't you have to go under the roof?
Yeah.
Or could we put it in the frontage?
Or put it out, yeah, go out the frontage.
What, the frontage and go across rather than trying to get bored? Cause I can't get anybody to answer when you try to bore. See what nots do.
I, I have one, I have one other comment and then I'll be quiet. Trust me, no kidding. It's work for the government. But you guys didn't hear what Sam, what, what Pam said. The reason we didn't have a local person build a house here was because the city council was unre, uh, was unwilling to work with it. That's the reason. Okay?
Why is the city council unwilling? I'm, I'm unaware.
Uh, I rest my case.
That's what he said.
I rest my case.
Right.
We had a gentleman that wanted to buy a lot in town and the city would not put these, uh, lots up for sale, do, do whatever.
Because it's too hard.
How long they built them?
It's too hard.
Huh? Two years ago?
Two years?
Yeah.
Well, it's been two years since we got rid of that stuff.
Well.
That's what made this song.
There's still a lot down here that are.
We had an empty lot.
Focus in on one when there's so many.
Church lot there or whatever you're talking about.
Oh.
Sorry, I was very, very.
Anyway, we have to do some more checking into that. A new business, consider village and tobacco license in motion to that.
Did we do that one?
Alcohol.
That was alcohol.
Make my. Alcohol.
We have a motion in second for the, consider the village and tobacco license. Craig?
Yeah.
Mike?
Yeah.
Pay him?
Yeah.
Devin?
Yeah.
It is. Resolution twenty-five oh four, voided basis. Resolution twenty-five oh four, employee wages.
I've got the, on the back is listed what was, um, talked about anyway when we came up, but.
So, these are the, what they're making now?
No, this will be what I'm making, which is what I first paid for. This is.
This is the area, we just moved it.
Right.
We approved that, but on.
We talked about it, this is just the official application.
A second.
Motion made for resolution twenty-five national four for employee wages. Second, Craig.
Yeah.
And it's not a conflict for Devin to vote on that, right?
No.
Just ask him, okay?
I'll do so.
Okay.
You have Pam?
Yes.
Devin?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes. And motion to approve resolution twenty-five oh four. Consider bid on the two thousand pickup help ingredients.
What you wanna do to the pickup that you're getting?
Pickup I'm getting, speedometer don't work. Uh, ABS lights on. No radio, wipers don't work.
The snowplow's going over to that one, right?
Well, that's what I wanna buy a new one, leave that with the old one.
The old fire truck's what you're talking about, that you're getting.
Right, the old grass.
So.
You have a bid?
Of what?
I was thinking about getting a bid.
Well, you had a bid to blind the back.
Yeah, I got a bid to blind the back at six hundred bucks.
Blind the back for us all?
Bed liner.
How's that, no?
Have a line.
That line, gray line.
Why?
But don't rust out.
Don't rust out.
I don't know what condition of it, I don't understand how you're using it, that's what I'm trying to understand.
Well, you got, you got to put standard in the back, well, you.
That's what you're, that's what I was asking.
Yeah, instead of putting one of that leather or.
Blasting.
Plastic liner in there.
I got you.
Spray it.
Comes on a card from showroom.
Six hundred bucks.
So, then we haven't got a, I know this speedometer's gonna cost, well, how many ever years? Couple, three years ago, we took it over to Smitty and, well, we took it to Union first and then Darwin said, we'll take it to Smitty and we took, both bids were well over a thousand dollars. To fix this speedometer.
We just put it around here.
Now, the wipers, that, that isn't a fuse or.
I've kept all of you.
So, we need to take that, maybe take it up and see what, what the Ford and Honda's first.
I can't get the wipers to work.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, the wiper. And then you said a check in line?
ABS light.
Yes, so they could probably look into that too.
This has been wrong with this, and the guys have been using it for the fire department?
Only got six thousand miles on it, so they ain't been getting very rough.
I didn't know about the ABS light, but, uh, wipers haven't worked for a while, and the speedometer's been out for a while.
He's just driving around town, it doesn't go to like Marshalltown, does it? Does it?
Oh, we drive to Marshalltown.
With that truck, not your truck. Oh, I was just curious, that's all, that was what I'm thinking. You do what my buddy did in high school, he just had a GPS up on the window that told me my ass is prowling.
Boom.
Problem solved. Sounds like a fifty dollar fix.
Well, that ABS light, that, I don't, is that breaks?
Fire. Yeah, it breaks, I mean, that's all.
So, that probably needs to be.
We can have that wiper.
Yeah.
New snowplow, repeat plow with twelve thousand dollars.
That's what I was wondering, it says selling the snowplow, why are we doing that?
Well, we sold the pickup, the pickup bring more money with the snowplow on.
That wasn't a deal.
I thought we were just gonna use that plow, I thought we were gonna transfer it.
We recently had that, yeah.
We just got one.
So, take the snowplow off of that?
I'll take, I'll take the budget to twelve thousand dollars.
And then I'd say we just transfer it over, that would be done.
Let's walk it.
We're out to have some wire and get it to do that.
A lot.
But we're going from one two thousand to the other two thousand? Okay.
Just keep the sisters together.
So, we need to actually get the wipers fixed and that brake light thing on, for sure. And I, I, okay, so. We wanna improve the six hundred dollars to spray the bed line. Need a motion for that?
Yes, we're here, we can do it. It is a.
Can we get, can we get those other expenses in with that also?
No, they don't show.
The bed liner people aren't gonna do that.
Oh, okay, gotcha, okay. I'll make a motion for the bed liner to be sprayed from showroom for six hundred dollars.
I was talking about.
Motion to spray bed liner on the two thousand pickup, Craig?
Yeah.
Mike. Pam.
Yeah.
Devin.
Yeah.
Take it somewhere to get. Want to get the wipers working.
Well, I was gonna say, that's not a good fit.
I just take it up, by inform. Or Smitty, whatever you wanna do.
Okay.
I'll call him tomorrow. So, do we need a quote about so much to do all that, or are you just gonna fix the whole thing?
It just needs to be fixed.
Needs fixed.
Well, no, I know, I didn't know. We need to fix it.
Yeah.
Consider sale on two thousand four city maintenance truck.
Without the snowplow, sir.
Right now, man.
How do we normally do?
Put it up for bids?
Usually just put it up for bids, it was mentioned that you could put it on whenever Iowa State sells their stuff on. I know nothing about it, it was mentioned we might get more for it.
Does everything work on it, or is it?
Everything work on it? Right, got it, wrote it.
What's that?
Front end's gone.
It runs, but she told her.
Wow, we've got to run it. Um, twenty years of running, twenty-five years of running it, wow.
You bought it in? Yeah, so you just put up your bid.
Yep, that's one of the, that's, we need to put that in our, front end's bad.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's.
And as is, as is.
But different without it.
Well, as is, but.
Yeah.
Mention the front end.
Yes, definitely.
Give her a list of everything that's wrong with it, give her a list of everything that's wrong with it.
We'll take some pictures.
Yeah.
All I have is for July.
All right, consider having the tile liner located. Is that what, what we, I mean, it's on the agenda for.
So, there's somebody else we can talk to? Besides Shalise? We don't have that one.
So, what, what do we locate, I mean, which one, we've already did that one.
It's, oh, this, go, come up this direction, it's gone west of the.
Part of what we wanna run a new tile line. On the ditch down to the other tile line, or go across the road.
Well, I'm all for laying a new one later, we gotta figure out.
You would not figure it out if we knew it in.
So, you know how to get in front of it, is what you're saying?
Right here in the ditch, right where the, where the coin cone's sticking out.
Is that in front of?
It's across the road from me.
On Buck's side?
Yeah.
So, here we go, are we gonna have issues?
Well, we're gonna have issues, 'cause if you don't, if you don't want us to go down through his yard, so we go down through city property, which is a ditch, so we're gonna take four trees.
Okay, but right now, we're saying going east and trying to find the end, right?
Either way, like, if you're gonna have to take, if you're gonna do the tile, you need, I didn't see four trees, but three. Would, well, not far, there might be one.
You can plant a tree up there next to the way you bike.
Okay, but right now, if we're located, don't we, excuse me if I'm wrong, we don't know going from his place east, we don't know where that goes, right?
You can come uptown.
Yeah, uptown, we don't know where that goes, so I think right now, we wanna figure out where that goes, don't we? So, then maybe we can reroute it or whatever, if we have to, that's fine.
Supposedly that's running fine. Nobody blows up down there, it's.
And I don't know, did we, you said April there was, before it was done, you know, when it rains since April? We did it. Not a hard rain.
We haven't had a hard rain, I don't think, since it was done.
We did it out. And got it, and got it to run it.
Well, it was done last year and then we had this, this April, this beginning of this year, had two inches and it, it was geysering.
But after that, but after that, it was cleaned out again.
We haven't had enough rain after that, it took about, little less than two days for it to, actually for that hole to lose the water, so. It's holding somewhere.
But we go across that whole property and we had talked about regrabbing it if we found, instead of cutting across that.
That goes right down there and goes where we had Shalise across Bob closes.
Yeah.
Down there and you said that's running.
That's running down the railroad tracks.
But how good?
But, see, it's, it's across Buck's yard, 'cause they plant trees right on top of the tile line.
And as far as the ditch there, it's gonna get better, I mow, I went down, I mowed it, he doesn't mow it, I don't know.
I mowed it too.
Wasn't too bad, I mean, you know, I don't know. My mower's pretty low in the ground, it was all pretty steeped in twice, so. But it, it's, and they got grass in there, it's gonna get better, the ditch that's, probably could mow too, is right there by, where Don Case, uh, Christie Rogers. I could probably mow that too, but we've got so much garbage in there, I didn't wanna blow it out in the ditch.
That's all come, that's all come off of C Street. But that tile line down there, it, it all get cleaned out.
And that, that's for cullards to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, what do we do?
Just wait till we get another rain?
I guess if we, we did something since we've had that big rain.
I mean, you guys.
You're saying we haven't done nothing since.
You guys just need to see, see it geysering, 'cause, I mean, I have video, I have pictures of April, and it's.
Well, we gotta clean down after that.
I don't think it's clogged, it's broken.
What cleaned out means or what it's do, I, I honestly don't know what it's doing. Like, it took time for it to, for it to actually empty, it, it may not have been geysering out, but when I went back there two, two days later, the, the hole was still full of water. So, there's a hole that is pushed up and it's very loose, you can stick your hand down through it.
I don't think that it's plugged, I think that it's just broken right there, so when there is, there. There's a tile that cuts through.
There's no tile line there.
There is, that's not a tile line, so what is the wa, what is the water flowing then?
It's seeping out, 'cause there's a, oh, it used to be a post in there.
It does line up directly.
With where he dug last year?
With the tile, I'm sorry.
Is there a tile under the trailer?
The tile comes underneath the trailer.
That's the tile that I'm talking about.
That tile's clear.
I, and that's what I'm saying, I'm not saying that it's.
Corner off the trailer or not, as it goes at an angle towards Buck's.
And it's not clogged, it's just broken.
Okay, so, like, it, it's at an angle like that, it may cut the corner off and go under the trailer, I don't know. I don't really think he knows that for a fact either, I don't think anybody really does. That's why we need to probably map it before, slightly before and after to find out. And we need a professional company that lays tile, that knows what they're doing to do it, that has a long enough blower, hose and, and camera, whatever, they have the tools for it.
It's just broken.
You blew that one clear across Bob closes lot, so I don't know.
Well, they repeatedly told me three times that they couldn't reach.
Yeah.
Or, Shalise told me that and so did, so did he.
See where.
They could run a tape for a hundred foot down, up and down, down different sections too.
I mean, I wish I was just up here pulling your guys' chain.
We're just gonna have to look into it more and.
Okay.
Whatever.
Can we find a company who does?
Could be a broken tile.
Just find an opening who does.
There's a company on thirty by Cedar Rapids.
That great big orange truck that's over there.
There's, I, I, there's a company down there right now, over at school, there's cameras, some sewer lines from April there. And they're not making, so I can talk to them and see. And then their sewer line, there's a guy with the company that works through Conrad, I know that too, that. Well, I'm talking, this is.
Is that guy's over in, just tell them business? calls for, does he still business?
I saw he's trying.
Does he do tile, or is he just a sewer?
I'm just having Cameron about fifty foot over there, a hundred foot, that's four hundred dollars, what it's gonna cost to Cameron this sewer line. It's quite tight, I was looking.
And how much of that stuff, we're showing up to be?
So, I mean, I don't know if it'll charge.
I'll bet, I'll bet Shalise would take that.
Know where that thing is.
He doesn't, he doesn't have the tools for it.
Oh, don't he?
No.
He should be a guy, so I'd.
I can ask her.
Yeah.
See if she's.
Yeah, it's just, it's too long, it's too, too far of a distance for Shalise.
They just dig down and they could run a tape about a hundred foot and check it out too, that way.
Yeah.
It don't take much.
All right, we'll get some.
Clay tile don't take much of that to break and make a little.
Really remorse.
Yeah.
Um, fire, I got fire department.
That's what's happening back there.
Um. Say, I got fire, yeah, I got fire department, uh, it's been quiet, business as usual, the, uh, getting the truck set up with some upgrades and getting the new truck, uh, fit for duty, um, it's gonna look really cool when it's done, Ben's going pretty, pretty wild on it, um. And yeah, that's it, just business as usual and getting the trucks going.
You don't have nobody here for first responders?
He sent me something, um, he's not here because he's teaching EMS classes. They are working on tiered emergency asset management system in the county to help better serve the response areas in the community. This will include some protocols for when Liscum EMS is not available and also when Unity Point is delayed or not available. They will be using B certs in Union to help out more when that's, when everybody else is delayed or not able to come. It's not in effect yet and it's in the review process, so. Albion has three new students going through the EMT class at college, so that will double Albion's roster. And Melinda Diggitter's certification back from the state of Iowa and has, um, reached out to join the service again.
So, we need, we need to give Cam that.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Re, uh, remegging on my promise to shut up, who's in the, in the dark to the EMS?
Jordan.
Jordan Hoy.
Jordan Hoy.
Denise Hoy, Barry Hoy.
I, I know Jordan.
Oh, okay.
I know, I know who you're talking about.
Okay. Yeah.
Him and Melinda and.
Ryan.
Ryan. Okay.
Cleveland.
Yeah. Okay, okay, thank you.
Streets and alleys, Craig and Bill.
Oh, they're all right.
I, I have a question, I know it's, this isn't on there, but. I, I have a question, I know it's, this isn't on there, but cemetery, did we get that sign order for the cemetery?
No.
What sign?
So it doesn't look like a?
Oh, the brush.
Brush.
Brush pile.
So, so we're.
What do we want it to say, for sure?
Brush only.
Only.
Brush only from Liscum residence.
That'll help.
For Liscum properties.
Yeah, you don't want Liscum residents, you think like that property somewhere else.
Well, sure, okay.
For Liscum property.
From Liscum.
Um, what I was gonna say is, I wondered if we, I mentioned starting, um, a bit more of a savings fund for the streets, a couple months ago, and I wondered if we didn't get that moving and talking about that more? If we talked about trying to put more money inside for future projects, for the street, cause it'll inevitably be something.
Did we do that in the budget?
Uh, we just, he just talked about it.
He talked about pulling it from somewhere, and.
You know, like the lost fund, could be my suggestion.
Have we heard any more about this property tax propaganda stuff going around?
No, it's dropped until next year.
Okay, okay, I was concerned about that, the small towns look like they were gonna not reap any benefits.
Yeah, you know, set a certain amount, would you like, please like to do that, and then, I mean, if you want to, I can put it on the July budget, or do it in the August, or not budget, agenda. To set up a road use, a road fund, separate from the road use tax, that'd be separate, and, um, and when the transfer funds, then we can do that.
And we said, what, last year, two years ago, it was how much a block?
I don't know. I was gonna say it was.
Three blocks, three blocks of thousands.
Thirty-three thousand block?
Yeah.
No, no matter what we do for roads, we should have some kind of setup.
That's what I was trying to.
I mean, we're not saying.
You know, and right now, we have sixty-three thousand in road use, so.
You'd be good to set up another.
You know, that's two, two boughs.
We get that one, like, and if you didn't, we'll talk about that, or.
Marcus, Devin, Pam?
Um, not at this moment, I have some ideas I'm gonna talk to Pam about here sometime.
You could do like a tree.
What?
If you had trees.
Yeah, I'm gonna go pull them out. I thought only did it a beat too. Last, I, it was trying. Other than that, no.
General Utilities, Devin and Craig?
Yeah, so, um, we're gonna talk about finally getting the office updated, I think we need to, Michelle and I chatted with mom a little bit about just what she'd like in there. So I think we need to start planning for that a bit, and getting, um.
That's on the community building. This is very, I guess, that's good.
Yeah, I'm not on community building, so, um. Yeah, so, but I think we need to start getting those office updates, um, she kinda has a list on wanting a bigger office, um, which I think.
And we put that in the next year's budget, didn't we?
Yeah.
So get a bigger office, we don't use that room for this anymore, there's no reason not to try and get her a bigger office, get her the door to get out the back, if she needs to. Um, that's a security concern of her being like, factors, to be honest with you, but that's fair enough, I think. Um, so, some of those things I think we need to get in motion here. Um, I'm not entirely sure who you wanna call for that, not Graham. Uh, but, we need to move along with some of that, I guess, so, she kinda has a plan on what she'd like, so. I know it's community building, but.
Well, if you got that group, just a mouse over there.
Yeah, and she would like more storage, um, some cabinets, um, and get rid of that big table.
How much did we budget for that?
Uh, sanitation, looks like four hundred and three thousand gallons average, thirteen thousand gallon per day usage. Flow is one million, six hundred and eight thousand gallons, average fifty-three.
Well, some.
Five hundred and thirty thousand gallons a day. We recorded three point nine inches of rain in April. Spring discharge will be completed this week, is that true?
What?
Spring discharge.
Spring discharge will be completed this week.
Yeah.
Yeah, what, meaning it, it's done?
Okay.
We either gotta get some coffee, salt bait, or more carb.
Or more carb, weeds are getting bad?
Yes.
Maybe, maybe the fireworks won't give up.
Public safety, I guess.
Which would you rather have? Which would you rather have?
Well, last time I did coffee, salt bait, don't learn, but they don't make the chunks no more, that's all sure, and they just don't.
So we need carb.
Can you get that from Highmark?
You mean your fishing.
On carb bait?
Carb.
Carb, got it off, carb, Highmark.
Or send, or send Ted fishing for carb.
Yeah.
If you don't be different.
Or the mark. Community building.
I have Lucas here today to come out and talk to us.
I'll be right for that door for a minute.
Fire department?
Yeah.
What's per personnel, Mike and Pam?
What?
I don't know, it's on, it's on that box, I don't know what that is.
She's been still.
And I don't have nothing for the mayor to report.
For the next meeting, I'm not sure when you'll get your packets, I always help with the week camp, and they moved it up to the week before we have our meeting, so. I'm hoping that most of it's done before I go, but, we'll see.
Can we also put on the agenda for next, next month, cleanup discussion?
What do we?
Oh, yeah, we, I usually put that on there once we get the bills.
So under a problem?
Yeah.
Well, when you buy a talented guy stuff.
Well, and what did you say there were?
They took microwaves out of the cemetery and dumped them off, water heater out, burn pile.
I saw an old TV stand out there, I didn't see those.
I didn't see the TV.
Two microwaves, where else?
Off or a brick on there, huh?
Microwaves were where?
Down by the black shed.
Do you think it's people from in town, not having a clue where it go, or it's outside people breaking it in and thinking?
They throw them in the dumpster where they're not supposed to, they don't wanna pay for it, so they just throw them anywhere.
And the water heater was?
I have them in the dumpster.
Water heater was where?
Out there.
And she say that was a refrigerator?
Huh?
Didn't you say there was a refrigerator?
No, it's.
Oh, okay.
Water heater and two microwaves.
Okay. So, yeah, I'm.
And everything, and the ones that got in the dumpster, they were thrown in at dark night time, time after seven, eight o'clock.
Um, are you wanting to close down the street or not, cause we had talked about that last month. I don't really care, I'm just trying to find people that are spots to watch fires, that's all, don't matter to me, I'm sitting in the yard, but. No, they don't, but.
Well, I guess.
I mean, I don't know that we have to, do we have to do anything if we shut that down?
Just block it off.
Just block it off.
We had talked about pulling out here, give some barriers or something. I'm just trying to figure out, make sure people got.
Well, I guess my question is, it all depends about the elevator, if we can't park down at the elevator, we're gonna be, yeah.
Oh, yeah, we don't have an answer tonight, so.
I don't think that there'll be no issue, the only, the only issue is, we gotta make sure they don't climb the tiles.
Or the man. People aren't pulling there, but.
Motion to adjourn? I'm outta here. Motion?
He motioned for two seconds.
Second?
Wait, wait, wait.
Get, get annihilated, uh, landfill meeting, uh, went real good, and, uh, the overall board raised, uh, a ton each, four dollars a ton, for increasing, for, uh, garbage. So.
What is the landfill, is that a board?
Yes.
Yeah.
And we have to send a representative, since we use them, since John's our representative.
We're gonna have to be here, though, we have.
So four dollars a ton?
Yeah.
Starting in July, or?
But, I.
Say, starting in July, or did they say when?
Well, well, be, probably July for.
Yeah. Does that affect us?
Well. Garbage bill's probably gonna go up.
The cleanup day.
Four dollars a ton, I'm not sure, four by fifty-seven persons, too, we don't know.
We paid so much to the landfill for, to be, be able to have our, the garbage from town, by all. No, it's, well, that's all they raised, is so much per person, based on the census, but, all the Republicans.
Yeah, one other thing that I'm, gonna throw out for suggesting, I would come to, I'd like to see parking lanes on the street, that dress up the street a little bit, uh, angle parking.
In line on the street.
That's what I'd like to see, just dress it up a little bit.
Okay. He does that down?
Blue, white paint.
Yep.
White blue. White blue paint.
Okay, are we just?
Blues, yellow, or handicap.
I said.
What's up there?
Some malaria left.
Well, it's been.
Thank you, yellow.
Yeah, yellow, yellow blue.
Yellow, the caution line.
Yellow and white blues handicap. Yep.
Excuse me, it's VIP? Excuse me, it's VIP? I'm being a smartass, I'm sorry. Took me a little serious there.
Yellow, yellow and white blue is VIP, you gotta put them together.
Oh, okay, is that, is that a real thing?
Yeah.